All right, we'd like to call to all of this meeting of the Upton County Zoning Commission, and we're gonna start out with a roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Here.
Chair Fallon?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Vice Chair Rush?
Here.
And of course, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is adoption of the meeting minutes from last meeting, January 13th. Does anybody have a sense to look over them, accept them?
Yeah, I think we need to make amendment to under New Business Part B. If my memory is certainly right, Commissioner Murphy nominated you as chairman, and Commissioner Rush seconded it. According to this, it says Commissioner Rush nominated you, so that needs to be amended.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Doug, you get those. All right, next on our agenda is Old Business. We had the public hearing, we continued on the zoning ordinance amendments and the subdivision ordinance amendments to will. We want to discuss that, and we want to continue that again.
I'd make a motion, let's move that down below, right above item number five.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, on New Business, we have an application for special exception, SPX 202501, applicants for property owners Jason and Walt Patterson, 957 Jugtown Road, parcel number 53001, AR, .9 acre family cemetery. I'd like to open a public hearing for the Pattersons. Anybody in the Pattersons here to speak? Okay?
Yes.
Step up. We're limited to five minutes when you speak to us.
Okay. I'm Jason Patterson, 957 Jugtown Road, but my parents just want to have a family cemetery on the backside of our property, basically in the middle of it. It's 153 acres, and we'll be in the middle, basically half a mile from the road, half a mile both ways from property line, so we're not very secluded, very out of the way. The only way you get there is basically contact us. No public access, just nice secluded spot in the back.
Okay.
And we're surrounded by floodplains, so it can't be developed. Heavily wooded, prayer mountain on the backside. So we're just very nicely secluded little place for them, and that's what they want, that's what they're asking for.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do we have anybody who wants to speak in opposition to the private cemetery? Okay, any questions from any of the board members?
I have mine.
So, I have a question. Approximately how many acres are you planning on deeding off to this cemetery?
We don't plan to deed off any, we're just squaring off that northeast corner of the pasture in the middle. Basically, it just means perimeter, the perimeter fence would be the one acre, and then inside that, we're going to do basically two, or two or three 10-by-10 burial plots.
So basically, you want to occupy an acre?
Yes, sir.
To put two or three 10-by-10 burial plots?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it sounds big, but it's just a corner of that field, so without having to move anything, we've already got fences there.
So, one thing to consider, you know, is looking at this application is, not saying anything ever would happen, but what in the event that your family decides to sell this property at some time, and you still want access to that burial plot? I think thing that you would need to consider would be an access easement?
Yes, sir.
From the public right-of-way to that location?
Yes, sir.
And so we would just need to, that's something I would want you to consider?
Yes, sir.
You know, before we would consider, you know, approving or denying, this is something I would like for you to consider.
Yes, sir. And what we already really have, basically, the front 60 acres, which is both sides of the road, basically when you start at the swamp, basically, there is a right-of-way out to Gooden Road. And if it ever got split, which I hope it never does, it would not take the front 60 acres being at the road, but that would just basically deed off the back 40 acres in Hudson, 40 acres in Pike, and you could use that right-of-way to get back to that.
Yeah, I mean, at some point in time, you're crossing private property, so you would need to dedicate an easement?
Yes, sir.
At least a 20-foot easement?
Yes, sir.
To be able to gain access to that. That way it's recorded, and it stays with that property from the duration, because anything can happen.
Yes, sir.
And if it were to happen, your family would want the right to get back to that.
Yes, sir.
So, that's the only thing I have about that.
And like I was saying, the easement's on that back property, it's already there, we just have to read the application.
Okay.
Yeah, I think to your point, there would need to be a platted cemetery with a platted deed easement for that, in order to ensure that there's always access to it for both in the future.
Okay.
No matter what happens.
Right, right, yes, sir. And that's things I'm working on as my part after we get approval, so.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
Just let Doug go first.
Okay, Doug?
Absolutely. All right, as you've heard, we got the owners Jason and Walt Patterson requesting a family private cemeterium of approximately .9 acres of 112-acre parcel parent tract at 957 Jugtown Road. The property is zone AR. In the AR zoning district, under a special exception, cemeteries are listed. This is in the north central portion of the 112.5 acres. The zoning in the area is AR, and you'll see on the map that's in your packet, and we'll show here in a second, this is very isolated from the neighbors, so this is not going to affect anybody nearby in any way, shape, or form. Now, standards by which poses like this are supposed to be reviewed by the planning commission and the board of commissioners, these are those standards, and you see those addressed in the staff report. The character area in the comp plan is agriculture. Staff analysis, again, this is not contrary to the purpose of the ordinance, because it's listed as a special exception, so it's not given automatic weight, but through the special exception process, it can be considered, and that's why we're here now. Most of these standards deal with impacts, nuisance, et cetera, and obviously, based on the proposal, we've got, it's so isolated, it's a very large parcel, it's obviously not an active use, it's a very passive use, so we don't really need to worry about negative impacts on the neighbors or the community in general. Now, this is one of the, well, it is the largest, I think since we've been doing this, seven or eight of these have been approved, this is the largest that we've had. Staff recommends approval, and the conditions that we have there in your staff report and here are the traditional ones, obviously modified slightly for this project, but staff recommends, you recommend approval to the board of commissioners with these conditions that, of course, they meet state regulations for cemeteries and for the disposition of human remains. We designate here the size that we've been told that this area is going to be, and this may not be a commercial, that's one of the requirements that we've had always, is that it can't be turned into a commercial cemetery. Doesn't have to be family, it can be friends, relatives, things like that, but it's not going to be commercial in any way. We ask that within three months of the first burial, that an affidavit be filed with a clerk of the court, and they send us a copy saying, basically, this cemetery's been established, this person's been buried there, and this will be an indication to any future owners that there actually is a burial and a cemetery at this location. And then lastly, of course, we ask that it be well-maintained at all times, whether it's structures, the ground itself, et cetera, you know, there's the potential if something happened, probably not at this site, but if there were code violations or problems, this would be what we would look to, to say, wait a minute, you've heard that there are problems with your cemetery, and we need it to be maintained. Typically, of course, what it is, is overgrowth, again, I'm not sure that that pertains so much in this case, but again, that should be a standard condition for all of these cemeteries. The planning commission may approve, approve with conditions, or deny the request. The decision must be based on the special exception criteria and other pertinent factors, and we ask that the mover or someone say why you're recommending approval, as required by the bylaws and ordinances. All right, so this is the, the floodplain sort of obscures, you can see in the light blue, the property line. I wanted to make sure that because there's substantial floodplain on this property, that I included that. But you can see there towards the top where the label says that it's going to be, we're not in the floodplain, so we don't need to worry about that with this family cemetery. We did the best we could, you've got photos in your packet, a lot more photos than I'm going to show you, that are from the applicant, to show you approximately where it is. This was the best I could do on a foggy day to take pictures. You'll see in the foreground, there's one pink flag, there's actually more that just aren't visible, and then there are some green flags that try to show you where the boundaries of the cemetery are going to be. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry for skipping over you there. Any other motions?
I'd make a motion that we approve this applicant with the staff recommendations. Commissioner Marty, Commissioner Rush's recommendation, so let's approve this, I'd make a motion to approve it.
And the recommendation being that needs to be deeded and deeded access, is that the?
Yeah, it needs to be recorded on the deed, where there's a provided access easement for the purpose of, in the future, that to gain access to this lot, there's a recorded access easement, and then I still think that there needs to be designation of that actual burial plot there, that one-acre burial plot, so that in the, in the, happens that something happens and the family doesn't keep the property, that still belongs to your family, or that still gives you the opportunity to visit that site, or if you wanted to add an additional family member to that location.
Yes, sir.
I think the cemetery plot needs to be planted, as we're discussing, with that deed and easement, and that also comes into play for tax purposes in the future if properties ever sold. The new owner may not want to pay tax on a cemetery that they're not involved in, or their family's not in it, it comes up all the time, actually, so we need to make sure that everything is recorded, as you're saying, so it can be addressed at that time, if that situation arises.
Okay. So, I guess to word it correctly?
Okay, Doug, you, is there specific wording we need to use there with what we've, are you going?
Wordsmithing will take a while, but we'll get it in there.
Okay.
And I'll certainly show it to y'all, and if that's not, obviously, this recommendation's got to go eventually forward to the board of commissioners, so make sure that you're happy with the language, if not, we can wordsmith it at the next one.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll second Commissioner Hilton's approval with the conditions that the staff has provided, and the condition of the access easement and the plotting of, or plating of the cemetery parcel.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. All right, we go to the board of commissioners then?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is going to be application for rezoning, REZ 202501, it's 10 Acres Lake LLC, Old Alabama Road and Williams Road, of 266.36 acres, parcel number 016020, 021, 021A, 021B, 031A, ARPM, for 124 residential subdivision, 124 lot residential subdivision, light commercial clubhouse, storage units, and RV parking. I think, Mr. Doug, you mentioned you wanted to make a statement before we start with this?
Well, it's just whether you want the staff report before you hear from the applicant, or the public hearing?
Okay, well, we can start off with the Serenity Lake representative, and let him explain their intentions.
Who was you like?
You're okay, Rodney?
Yep.
State your name and address.
My name is Dan Sprangetti, my address is 975 Western American Drive in Reno, Wisconsin. Want to thank all of you for being here, really appreciate that you're coming out to, you know, look at this, and listen and learn tonight, really do appreciate, louder, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I'm going to go off my notes, because I don't want to go off on rabbit trails, here, I'm standing right here, thank you, sir.
Go talk to the leader.
Thank you, okay. My goal tonight is to do just a quick overview of what 10-acre lakes and Serenity Lakes is about, and kind of give you a nice perspective of what we're trying to do. This is a very, very special piece of land. It's a 266-acre parcel, it has 100 feet of topography difference, it's mostly wooded, it has waterfront on it, we will be adding more ponds and waterfalls, and I kind of say to people, at least my age, think Mayberry, that's sort of the vibe that we want at this subdivision. We want it to be quiet, tranquil, and my wife and I came here six months ago, we fell in love with this area, because it is quiet, and because it is kind of a throwback, and we understand that you have to have a balance of having some development, but the property out there is very unique, because we have a wooded buffer all the way around it, and it's designed to be really self-contained. And I wanted you to know that we're going to have some amenities, the lakes, the ponds, the wooded lots, the clubhouse, the pool, and a hiking trail that goes all the way around the property. So, we're very excited about that, because we're really trying, again, to get families to come, traditional families, that's what we're looking for. Our customers that we're looking for are attracted to this type of environment, where small town, everybody kind of knows their neighbor, you're there for each other, again, back to a throwback of what America used to be, and that's the kind of customer that's going to buy in Serenity Lakes, because that's what we're promoting, that's what we're marketing. And I think it's very important that when we build culture in business or in our subdivisions, that we are looking for the right kind of customer to be there. We're looking for, you know, families that, with the, again, small-town values, breaking bread together, and again, that time capsule type of environment that you really have here, on some level, you have that here, obviously. We're looking at the economic benefits, both, obviously, on a tax basis, the houses will range, we have storyboards, I have a range somewhere around $650,000 to $1,500,000. Those are the type of houses we're going to be building there, so it's good for your property value. In terms of being self-contained, we'd like to be able to possibly have a deli, you know, having the clubhouse there, and we don't want, you know, a Dollar General, and we don't want that kind of thing, we just really want to make it kind of self-contained, so the people that live in our subdivision can get a sandwich and sit down, or if they had a wedding, they could have a wedding reception, you know, in our clubhouse, that type of thing. It has, you know, an in-ground pool, we want to encourage family, that's really what we're all about. You know, we believe opportunity displaces poverty. There's a lot of ways out there that people think they can help poverty, in many cases there is handouts and things like that, and it generally doesn't work, and it's opportunity, and we really feel that we have a great opportunity, because we're going to use all local contractors. So, we're going to use local builders, we're vetting those people now, and all the subcontractors that come with it, so it's good for the community, we want to use that. We're going to hold them accountable for the standard that we have in our type of subdivisions that we build. You know, I kind of look at it like, you know, what will the legacy of this planning committee look like? And, you know, legacy is important, the legacy of the city, what's going on? If you have empty storefronts in your downtown, well, what can you do to get those storefronts, you know, filled? And I'm not talking about just another antique store, or a restaurant that goes out of business in six months, you know, we're looking for sustainability here.
Excuse me, just a second, we typically allow five minutes.
Okay.
We're about there, you?
Am I in there? Thank you. Okay. So, let me talk about the who, the team. The ownership group, flat-out integrity, character, they want to share this gift from God with everybody else in the community, if somebody wants to come and live there and build there. We're using Moon Meeks as our engineering company, they've been in business since the 40s, they've got over 250 subdivisions that they've done, they're very, very talented, they're seasoned, and that was important to us, to put really a Super Bowl team together.
Sorry for interruption, your time's called.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, we're here to answer all the questions that you have, once you're ready.
Okay. Do we have anybody who wants to speak in favor of the subdivision? Okay, I want to make a statement here, I mean, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight, whether you're for or against this situation, but keep in mind that what we're looking at here is a change from AR potentially to PM. This is, we're not approving a subdivision tonight, we're looking at a change of the zoning for this particular area. And under the current situation, this is AR, this property can currently be broken up into two-acre lots without any approval from anybody. So, as you listen and then make your statements about how you feel about things, keep these things in mind, and be open-minded, and consider these people are your neighbors currently, and will continue to be, you know, for a while, so. As we start with the people that are opposing, or have a statement to make in opposition, they're here, again, we have a five-minute limit, so let's please try to curtail that, and let's see, we want to start out with Keith, standard?
I just wanted to pause it.
Sir, just to pause it, that's all, okay. All right. Ms. Ann Carroll-Daniel, would you like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I appreciate your comments, but you do know, we know.
Ms. Ann, you can speak towards us.
And also state your name and address, just for the records.
Oh, Ann Carroll-Daniel, standing right in Roland Road, Upton County.
Okay.
That kind of stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
As I said, we appreciate some description of what is proposed here, but there's not a one in this room that knows we will have 1% control over all those adjectives and adverbs if this goes through. It will not be something we have control over. I'm 90 years old, I don't know how many more times I'm going to have to come up here and try to defend peace in the area I live in. Over 50 years ago, my husband and I decided that West Main Street was a little heavy, big semis passing all night, that we would love to have something that our three children might really enjoy out in the country. We rode every Sunday, and we found this piece of land, and was fortunate enough to get it. Unfortunate, we are on the Old Alabama Road, but we're on the corner, and since purchasing that over 200 acres, we bought two of the small tracts, again, on the Old Alabama Road. I wonder how many in this room remember many years ago, when the then-governor Jimmy Carter came to Upton County, brought a lot of men with him, they had tents and sleeping bags, they went out there on the Flint River, right down there at Squirrel Bluff, one of the most scenic places left in the state of Georgia, and he spent the night, and the next day, he said, "I want to tell you, I'll use all of my authority to keep this from being commercialized, and we are not going to dam up this river, it's the largest river in the state, and this is the most scenic place." I don't know if you all remembered that, but I just was so glad when that happened. But we keep having things that want to defeat that. One of the things I already do for years in my farm is get my cough cart pre-ticked before Sunday, and ride up down the right-of-way, and pick up beer cans. Now, I don't drink beer, but I can name you four or five kind right now. It's trash all up and down that road. We have motorcycles running up and down, motor homes, canoes, six of them hauling, we already have traffic. We don't want more. We want peace and quiet that we deserve when we went six miles out of town and found a piece of property. We had no idea that it would be delighted to be commercialized. And while they may say, we may have a nice little antique shop, they may have a nice little bait-and-beer shop, too. And we have no control, once this passes, what they will put in. And I don't think there may be but one or two people in this room that want it, and we need to speak to.
Thank you, Ms. Ann. All right, next, we have Janice Bowles. Please step up, state your name and address.
Yes, Janice Bowles, I live at 253 Roland Road, and I'm about maybe a mile and a half from where this project is proposed. One of the things about western Upton County is it is special, very special. We have nature, we have Squirrel Bluff, we have the border of the Flint River between us and the next county, we have the Boy Scout camp, we have Big Lizer, all of that's west Upton County. And particularly, Old Alabama Road has the route, you might as well call it Squirrel Bluff Road, we all do, but that's the way that you get to the bluff. As soon as you turn off Highway 74, left onto Old Alabama Road, you start seeing the road telling you what's wrong. And that, these are the signs, I'm quoting directly from, straight from the signs, as soon as you turn, low or soft shoulder, both sides of the road, wetlands are on both sides. You go a little further, up the hill, limited sight distance, both directions, 35 miles per hour. Go a little further, no through trucks. You go a little farther, another limited sight distance. You go a little further, almost to Double Bridges Road, and you see rough road sign. Now, how do you see that in Upton County? Rough road. Uneven pavement is another sign. That road is telling you all its eels, it can't handle the traffic that is proposed from this subdivision to come on that road, and add to it what we already have because of nature, which is trucks full of canoes and kayaks, and RVs, and campers that can't put on brakes real fast without doing some damage when they intersect with traffic that would be coming from this proposed subdivision. Without some type of true study of that road, that particular section to this project... Without some type of true study of that road, that particular section to this project, nothing needs to be built there. It can't handle construction, traffic, cement trucks and big machinery carrying down that road. Not counting the loss of serenity, which is a word that's been used for this subdivision. We would all lose our serenity, our peace and quiet, as Ms. Daniel mentioned, as we live in the country on 19 acres that I live on. A lot of people around me have 10, 20 acres. We like it that way. We don't like one acre. Crumbs. If you look at what the proposal is, which is 2,500 square feet with a three-car garage, that sounds wonderful. I wished I had it. I bet we all do with the property taxes that we pay now, but not all the property taxes that would be because of that. But if you look at the size that, and I don't know if they have something that you can put up and screen, but all of us were given this. That's not square lots, that's rectangular lots. And a one-acre lot, if it were square, would be 209 by 209 feet. The average size of footprint of a two-story, 2,500 square foot with a three-car garage is 2,900 square feet, which is 54 by 54 square footprint. So picture on 209 by 209 that you've got a 54 by 54 house. All that's wonderful, maybe, if it were square. This is not. This is rectangular, narrow and long. So you're going to have, basically, a house, the empty space the size of a house, a house, the empty space of a house, a house. 124 of those. Where are you going to set the tectic tanks? And where are people going to park cars when you've got more than three on the street? And when you have gatherings, where are they going to park? And how are school buses going to get through that? I looked at the area that looks like maybe a turnaround here, maybe. There's not a throughway. Can't come in and go out except one location. But I can't see and can't tell where this location is. That looks like private property to me. It's not a right-of-way on a road. There is also another exit here that appears to be onto other private property. It's not a road. So you have entrances on Old Alabama Road and an exit possibly, I think it was on Williams Road. But there are two other places that are notated. I don't know where they are. I ask that you, as you consider this, that you take into consideration the financial stability of what's going on with this company. I see on the paperwork, there are three people listed as owners. And that is James Franklin, Audra Faulk, excuse me, James Faulner and Audra Faulner and a person named Scott Dahl. The Faulners, I can do a little bit of research on, and I can tell that they are residents of Tompkins and have been since 2007 with a tax value of $198,000 on .28 acres. So they live in a subdivision. They don't live in the county. The internet indicates that they lived in Michigan and they resigned their jobs and came to work for BN Health in 2007. And they have been speakers for BN Health conferences since May of 2024. That was the last that I see activity there. They are now, since April of 2024, owners of a dumpster rental business called Ameritech Dumpsters, which would be really convenient if you were building a 124-acre subdivision to own a dumpster. I do not want us to be in a situation in Upton County that First Life was in, where they started building a huge project and then when you go by there now, it's abandoned. This is as you're going to the interstate. You can see the clubhouse. You can see different houses that were started. And they've got tar paper wrapped around them and there's never ever going to be anybody that lived there. It was crumbling and it's been empty for about three years. So I ask if you even consider this remotely. Think about the financial stability and experience of somebody building something this size in the country.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, and next, we have Pam Baxter. Could you step up and state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Pam Baxter, 4242 Old Alabama Road, Tompkins, Georgia. I moved up here in 1996 from central Florida to get away from just exactly what's going on or wants to be proposed to go on a half a mile from where I live. I had a horse, I rode that property. I knew the man that originally owned it, that sold it to these people. And I had access to ride my horse all over that property. And it is beautiful. I fish the lake. There's beaver, there's wild hog, there's deer. The habitat is wonderful for the people in the surrounding areas, Double Bridges. I know several people that live there that some have moved. But people that hunt in their backyard, that's legal with DNR. If you go to shoot a deer now, if they live on Double Bridges, the bullet, if they don't shoot it right, it could hit a home. It could hit a child. I'm concerned about the water, the aquifers, the septic tanks.
Yes.
The water, Reba Creek. There's wetlands on that property. The gentleman, Tony Corresmano, had himself a hill built up with a gun range. And we almost got stuck driving down there to shoot, his hunting range, his gun range. I also want to know, what are these people going to do for a living in Upton County to purchase a 600 to a $1 million home? I have no clue. Are they going to work in Columbus, Atlanta? I just don't understand. I lived on a 60 by 120 lot in a 900-square-foot home before I moved up here to purchase 24 acres. And I love Upton County. I've worked in the school system. My son graduated from Upton Lee in the ag degree. He went to Berry. We had cows on our property. He got a bovine free. We had horses, cows. We finally had to get rid of them. My husband got injured, became handicapped, so we had to get rid of our cattle. I've had stray pigs. I've got them and taken them back to their owners, stray cows, horses, donkeys. But I love it out there. It's quiet, it's peaceful, clean. And very, I don't know, everybody's friendly in the area. I'm one of the last places before you get to the bluff. So my concerns are for our community out there. Thurston Volunteer Fire Department, are they going to be able to help these people? Are they going to have their own fire department? Are they going to have their own police department? I mean, is it going to be like a 15-minute city? I mean, I don't understand. You know, when we first moved up here, we were told you had to have two acres and 1,080 square feet. That's what the restrictions were when we first purchased up here in '92. And we moved in '96 from Florida, between Tampa and Orlando. And that's just, you know what that's like. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Very concerned for our community and our habitat and our environment. Noise-wise, traffic-wise, Roland Road, Old Alabama Road.
Okay, thank you for your statement. Okay, next, we've got Mary Jones. Step up, state your name and your address, please.
Yes, Mary Pat Jones, 39 Fork Drive. I love what everybody has said, especially about the traffic and the construction vehicles. I ride my bike in that area. There's people that do come in that area that ride bikes and horses. And, you know, we like the nature, we like the outdoors. And I see 124 houses and that, that's what, 200, 300 extra cars coming and going. We live on Fork Drive. I could mow the grass in the summer on Fork Drive because the cracks are so bad and the grass grows so high. Roland Road, I ride my bike on, and the potholes, they fix about every three or four months because road's so bad. So I look at all that traffic. I'm wondering how long it would take to build 124 houses with the traffic, with the trucks, with the dump trucks, with the cement trucks, with, as somebody said, you know, I don't think the roads can handle it. I'm not against some nice houses in Upton County. I'm very much against one-acre houses out in that area. That is our prettiest part of the county. You know, it's kind of an interest. Like somebody said, you turn on 74 and it's like, ah, you know, nature, we're going to School Bluff, it's beautiful. You know, somebody put a nice, I guess, School Bluff, whatever, put that really nice sign there. But right now, at our entrance, we're going to have storage buildings. So now we're going to have storage buildings when we turn into our beautiful area. And then this huge subdivision. And it's just going to destroy what West County is. And so I'm against.
Okay, thank you. Next, we've got Adam Moslauer.
I'm one of the engineers here to help design this subdivision.
You're speaking for?
For, yeah. Well, I've done over 200 subdivisions. This is nothing, this is a good thing for the community. I've seen all kinds of development over my past 30 years. I've seen good development, bad development. This is a good development for this community. I don't know if you, some of the things that y'all have said and talked about is totally wrong. We got to go by all the standards of the BPA, all the standards of Upton County. So this is going to be a good subdivision. I know you may not want it in your community, but it's going to go somewhere. If you don't want it, then I'm sorry that your tax bases are pushing to go up on this. I'm just be embarrassed to not do this subdivision in your community. And the tax base, y'all are pushing to have to burden yourselves with it next year.
Okay, we've got an Edward French that wants to speak in favor.
I'm with the design team.
Okay. Please step up to the podium and state your name and your residence.
Afternoon, Louis French, Edward L. French, Columbus, Georgia. And I'm with the design team. I'm a landscape architect. And I certainly understand a lot of the comments. And I was the author of the layout. We do have public access everywhere. We show an access point to the right-of-way, just, I was a question. But the whole idea of developing something that's part of a conservation-type environment, if you've seen the layout, you'll see where all the stream corridors are being protected. You'll see where there's, the lots have really been contained to the land that's applicable for development of this type. There are only a handful of lots in that development, the layout, that are one acre, exactly. Most of the lots are anywhere between an acre and a half and two acres, as far as the land maps for each lot. With containment of the natural features, the lake, all the wetlands areas are being conserved. We do, obviously, we'll have to have a crossing, which we're trying to minimize that. We'd have to have a Corps of Engineers permit, it'd have to be embedded. But the culverts, 25% of the culvert depth, would have to be embedded for continuation of mussels, fish. I looked very closely at wildlife corridors on this when we were laying it out. Wildlife can go everywhere. But the main thing is water sources. And the water sources are in that valley, in that bottom. So, you know, we understand, I mean, I've been at this for 46 years. My dad was, you know, in it for the same time. So, you know, I've had the opportunity to develop things all over the country. And this development could be done and still, I think, have something that everyone in this room could be proud of. I think the development team and the owners team, you know, we're willing to listen and work. We've made drastic changes from the original layout that was brought to us, which I know you guys probably wouldn't have appreciated at all. But anyhow, we're here to listen to what you've got to say as well. But, you know, we do think that there's a good opportunity to somehow mix this. As the chairman of the zoning board said, two-acre lots on this site as a minimum is already within the zoning ordinance. And we're pretty close to that. It would affect the lot count, which obviously affects, you know, the cost of construction, the linear feet of road, all those kinds of things. But the lot count won't change drastically to get two-acre lots out here. And that's really kind of a general idea, which we're trying to maintain all the corridors of wildlife, all the wetlands and all the things that create a conservation area where everyone can back up to those areas and utilize them throughout, you know, in this area and enjoy the same things you got to enjoy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that completes everybody that got on my list. Does anybody else want to speak? Either for or against.
I'm honored.
Name, ma'am.
Jessica Meyer.
Okay, I'm sorry, I skipped here. Come, Ms. Meyer.
My name's Jessica Meyer. I live at 75 Double Bridge Road. I am very affected by this property, as anybody that lives out there knows, if you look at the land plot. I have so many more things I want to add to my list, but since you have five minutes, I'm going to try to stick to what I wrote down. I want to start off by saying, me and my husband struggled our whole life. Lived in Michigan, sold everything we had to move here, bought a piece of land and a house out there in the country. Greatest thing we ever did. Upton County is amazing. We love it. Every day, we are so thankful that we are here, so thankful. So when we found out that this was coming out there, it was absolutely devastating to us, as everybody else has gotten up and spoke. We can't even begin to think of how many years of destruction and noise this is going to bring to everybody, let alone the roads, everything everybody else has already brought up. I could stand here all night, given the same reasons that we all have been going, person after person. But what I want to do is I want to stick to your county comprehensive plan that everybody has made up for Upton. And so I'm going to go through that. I will bring up the fire department. Are they here? What are their thoughts on that? Has anybody asked them? They have a pumper truck and a tanker truck, and that's it. The roads, we've thought about that. Who's going to be maintaining and replacing those roads? We've already discussed how bad Old Alabama is. We didn't even bring up how bad Roland and Williams Roads are. You can barely fit two cars down those roads, let alone a cement truck and bringing in construction equipment, you name it. I wouldn't want to be on that road, would happen to pass one of those. Has there been a water study conducted for all these wells and septics? Can anybody guarantee that that's not going to affect all of our water out there? For this application, they're trying to rezone this land from AR to PM. This makes it mixed use. That can be residential, commercial and recreational space. This proposed change would dramatically alter the character of the neighborhood. Bringing a high-density residential development could affect property values, negatively impact the community's rural and suburban feel. I'll bring up the property, what those houses are going to sell for, in a minute. The plans for this land, when they originally purged it, were supposed to be homes on large-acre lots. We were told 20 acres or more, not one or two. Once the land rezoning has been changed, how do we know their plans won't change again? They've already changed multiple times, as far as we're aware of. How do we know they won't do it again? They can change it to whatever they want once you approve it. Being somewhat new to Upton, we've only lived here for eight years. I was not aware of the Upton Community Comprehensive Plan called Forward to Upton. I don't know if anybody else in this room is aware of it. But in that plan that was set forth by the county, the future development map is used to guide future development decisions. Proposed zoning change requests are reviewed for consistency with the Character Area Policy associated with the Future Development Map. According to that map, that was not made by the residents, that was made by the county, we are in the forestry zone. We are not even in agricultural, we're not in parks recreation. We are strictly in the forestry zone. In the forestry section of that community plan, it is to establish and preserve areas for forestry cultivation, residential use of low density, nature incident. Nature incidental to these activities is also allowed. Emphasis on low density, not high density 124 houses. Part of that land use is to protect environment and water supply watersheds by utilizing best practices for land disturbance. This could be future discussion as, if you look up that map, our pond and their lake are directly attached. We are directly attached, their lake.
Ms. Meyer, you have 30 seconds.
Well, I'll skip a few things, and I just want to say, I don't know who in this county, when the median income is $39,000 back in 2020, can afford a $600,000 home. Also concerned about the lack of notification on all of this, we had to go to the county manager to get the plans for these, as Doug was on vacation and wouldn't let his deputy clerk give us anything. We had to make appointments.
May I have your time?
All right.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else? Somebody on my list to speak. If you want to speak, you would need to sign the list. These ladies, if you want to sign the list and step up, sir, sure. Please state your name and your address.
The name is Rick Jones, 39th Fourth Drive. The only concern I really have is the rezoning of that area. I did some calculations on 224 homes on 266 acres. That's 2.1 acres per home. How are they going to do infrastructure as far as roads? That doesn't include the lake that's there. What's that size of that lake? It doesn't include the clubhouse that they want to do. It doesn't include the open space that they have on the map. 124 homes divided at 266 acres is 2.1 acre per unit. Right there is a fallacy that they're, they're dropping. How are they going to get the roads? How are they going to do all of that? The septic tanks, the water, that's, that's a major concern. And then, yes, they can, and it was tabled last year, for trying to get agricultural zone to a specific size before they can build. That is going to be brought back up again soon. It was warned at that meeting that if we put on the table that action, it's going to open the floodgates. And here's the floodgates. Thomaston cannot, or I cannot see how it can afford those type of homes. Now, I'm not saying everybody's poor, but the main income of Thomaston is government funds, social security, welfare, okay? How, it just doesn't make sense.
It's designed for people in Upson County.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you're not, I'm sorry, if you're not signing up to speak, you can't.
That's what's going to happen. It's going to take those.
It's a matter of, the whole point just doesn't make sense to change the zoning. That's what they're asking. They want to change the zoning in order to do that. Well, that's going to affect my farm. That's going to affect all the different areas around that area that is now not in the original PUD. It's not designed for that. The multi, it just, it's a flood. It's wrong. So that's the idea.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, you, we're going, oh, we got, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Please state your name and your address.
On behalf of the, my name is Sam Lady. I live at 429 Howell Street in the city, but I used to be on this board. And I used to live in this, what I would call God's Country area of the county. My ex-wife and I bought 10 acres out there, and I'm really speaking on her behalf and the behalf of my daughter. My biggest concern is the infrastructure. You know, Upson County is not a rich county, not a poor county, but not a rich county either. We talked about the fire department. We talked about the water, the water table. What is going to be the impact of 124 houses, say, okay, maybe that's 600 people? Pardon my French, but, you know, using their septic systems to pollute the, the ground and then, you know, these houses are built very close together. These lots are very small compared to everybody else that lives out there. So I guess my biggest concern is what is the impact on the environment? And then, what is the impact on the, the roads? You know, is the county going to end up having to pipe water out there? And maybe even sewage lines at some point? So that would then impact the taxpayer. Somebody brought up, oh, your taxes are going to go up if, you know, this is the kind of development that's going to improve your, your, your community. I just don't see it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. We're going to close the comments section now and I'll move to the staff report.
Yes, sir. We're having some AV problems tonight. We'll see if they. All right, the request, as you've heard, is from 10 Acres Lake LLC, 266 acres more or less. There is frontage on Old Alabama Road, Williams Road and Double Bridges, it's a very small section on Double Bridges, but there is some access there. This is from the current zoning AR to PM. The purpose of PM or planned mixed use is to allow, you know, something slightly different than as in the traditional zoning district and something mixed. Basically, create your own zoning district and then you follow those rules as opposed to, say, the AR, which the rest of this neighborhood would follow. This would have a, a different set of rules because of the PM. And that description's there on the screen. All right, a large portion, we'll get to the visuals soon, but Reeves Creek goes through the center of the property, so there's quite a bit of floodplain, which obviously needs to factor into the design. There's heavily wooded areas, there's pasture areas, there's at least a motorized trail system, and single, single-family home, dilapidated homes that is, that's currently subject to demolition. So part of this is in Zone A of the floodplain. The land uses, and you'll see this in the zoning map in your staff report, and we'll get to that again soon, everything out there is AR. There's really, there is nothing else. This area is zoned agriculture residential. The road system, you've heard mentioned a little bit out there. The major arterial is Old Alabama Road, which would be the access to many of the other points that residents would go to. There's also access on Williams Road, which is a local street, and Double Bridges Road, a local street. According to the applicant, potable water will be provided by individual wells and individual septic tanks. Emergency services in this case would be the sheriff's office, the mayor pro, and the Thurston Volunteer Fire Department. These are the descriptions. We have sort of a general overview of what should be encompassed in, in these zoning districts. That's in your staff report. You heard reference to the comp plan. These are some sections that talk about the character areas, what their purpose is and the goals that are in the comp plan. As you heard, the current character area map is forestry and residential use of a low-density nature is, is listed in that. Now, we have to make this relative. And when you look at the density in your zoning, the least dense is one, one unit on two acres, AR. We don't get less dense than that. Now, people may have developed that way, but in terms of regulation, AR is the least dense possible, and you're allowed to put two homes on that. So the AR surrounding this is similar to what's being proposed. And I'll get into it later, but what's being proposed is actually less than what the AR zone property owners could do. All right, the review standards, we talked about that in your earlier case with a special exception. We also have a separate set of review standards required by state law and our ordinances for rezonings. All right, staff analysis for the proposed use. You heard the description, 124 single-family units with a lot of traditional recreation facilities. There is planned a small retail area in association with that clubhouse. They are proposing an area for mini storage units for the residents, and an RV storage lot would also be included. The houses are a minimum of 2,500 square feet. That would be the largest anywhere in any zoning that we have. We don't have anything in our traditional zoning. The largest we have is R1, which I believe is 2,100 or 2200 square feet. So this would exceed what we currently have in R1, and there's not a lot of R1 in Upson County now anyway. Obviously, as a gated community, the use would be regulated by homeowners association, and you heard the price points of the homes. Again, as I referenced earlier, if they didn't do anything, by right, they all have AR on this property, all five of those lots. And the way it works AR is you need two acres in AR for one home. But there's a large loophole, and that's what we call guest quarters. And I've been talking about that, and it's known to some people. We, I talked to a citizen last week about building a guest quarters. So really, the loophole allows two homes on one acre in AR. So because they have currently zoned by right, they can actually build more houses now than what they're planned in this PM. So this is actually a reduction of what they have the right to do now. And again, in there, there's a little discussion about the numbers, but basically with the AR and assuming 66 acres is roads and wetlands and the, and the pond, they could probably build anywhere from 100 homes to 200 homes with the current zone. All right, and so if they stay with AR, if this was denied and they just said, okay, we'll just build with what we have the right to build now, number one, again, they would be able to build somewhere between 100 and 200 homes, depending on how the design went. The clubhouse would have to be permitted by special exception in the AR. Now, the retail they propose, a coffee shop, that sort of thing would not be allowed in the AR, so that would not happen. The mini storage also would not be permitted, as they've discussed in the PM. The outdoor recreation things, yes, all that, and I cite the section in your staff report near, all that, the swimming pool, tennis courts, basketball, all that, the grills, et cetera, would be permitted even in the AR. The centralized RV parking area would not be permitted. So the homes could still be built, but some of those commercial type uses would not be permitted. That, obviously, that's the mixed in PM, mixed use to allow these other accessory commercial units to the project. All right, going through those analyses, again, those standards that we have to use for these projects, we've already discussed the suitability of the use and compatibility with the area. Effect on the adjacent properties, absolutely, there's going to be effect. We know with 124, with one new resident, there's going to be more traffic, there's going to be more noise, there's going to be more light, et cetera. Multiply that by 124. There will be impacts, and yes, in this case, we don't have a county water system out there. We don't have a sanitary sewer, so those individual lots will have to develop individually. That's an impact, absolutely. There's no denying that. So whether, if you consider that a threat to health and safety, certainly the Board of Commissioners and you need to assess the impacts of what this development would be, whether it would be 100, 124, 200 homes. That certainly is a concern. And what, we talked about the impact. So we've got stormwater and drainage, there's going to have to be a plan for that. Traffic impacts, obviously, there's an environment right there. You know, there, there are trees and critters and plants that will be disturbed by any development. And of course, the demand for potable water will be onsite, the withdrawals. And good question, what are the cumulative impacts of 124 wells? That's a legitimate issue. Staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of this project, which actually is a reduction in density. I think it's very well planned. I've been here for 12 years, and obviously, this is one of the more mature and well-designed projects that have come across my desk. We have a housing debt in Upson County. There is a demand. Now, is this very niche? Obviously, it is. This is not for getting a nurse in here or somebody to work at one of our industries. But we need housing of all types, and here's a type that we can add to our inventory. And again, there was an attempt, as you know, to increase the density or decrease the density one unit for 12 acres. The citizens came out and that moratorium was actually eliminated, or it, it actually would not be resolving until about now. So they wouldn't even, if that had been existing, their fallback would have been in the AR, 1 to 12. Well, that didn't, it's 1 to 2 now. So we, we have one effort to decrease density in AR, and it failed because the citizens came out against it. So here we got sort of the opposite. Now, I am recommending continuing the public hearing. As you know, there's a proposal, and I'm going to show a little bit of that. It's in your staff report, a little bit here. They've sort of made an attempt, maybe the applicants made an attempt to sort of create that zoning district for us, but I think there needs to be a little more robust language in there, and I think there's some things that really are probably better for the homeowners' association to enforce rather than us. And I think that's the only thing in your staff report that's not done by myself, those proposals. But if we have another month, I can certainly work with the applicants and, and create what I think are the good elements that need to go into a PM zoning to give the applicants as well as the county the assurance that the development will go forward as everybody thinks it will, and we want it to go in the future. And this is what I was talking about. You can see it, okay. This is their attempt in their application to sort of create the PM zoning for their project. It, it needs some work, but you got a page and a half, page and three quarters there that you've had the opportunity to see. This is the first page of that. This needs some work. All right, and obviously, you have an assignment. For those in the audience who don't know, this is a recommending body. You are going to take your time to come up with the best recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Then this, your decision, once you make it, whether it's this meeting, next meeting, or the one after that, will then go forward as a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, but the Board of Commissioners will make the final decision on this rezoning question. All right, in your packet, and so we make this clear to those people who did submit us written comments. These are the comments I'm aware of, and you have these in your packet. Some of you, you even got them emailed to you earlier. But you have written comments from Darryl Hudson, Tanya Hudson-Anderson, Jean, Jean Broome, Shanna Barton, Matt Bricker, and Jessica Meyer. Ms. Barton requested that her comments be read out loud. Mr. Chair, that's up to the board, whether you want them read out loud or not. But for the, again, for the education of the audience, the planning commissioners do have your comments in their packets.
I think, did all of us read the, the one from her? So we don't need to have it read out loud? I would say not. Okay, let's skip the reading out loud.
All right. So this is the aerial of the photo, best I could. Now, you see, the only thing missing is the Williams Road connection. It's kind of hard to see. It's in the darker line on the southeastern side, maybe easier to see in your packets. I apologize to the audience, but what's in yellow and the light blue is the property for the project. You can see the floodplain in this area that's in the broader blue. So you can see that the Reeves Creek floodplain does take in the center spine of the project, and certainly has to be. has to be considered in the design. Now, this is the zoning. I could have gone on with more ARs, but you can see, in this area, there is nothing but AR. That's what everything else is zoned. And again, this is the, you've all had the opportunity, if anybody wants one of these conceptuals, we've got a few extras up here. This was provided by the applicant, and so this is the conceptual, and it more accurately shows the boundaries of the property that they currently own. Again, this is the conceptual. It's not final. The final would be designed through a subdivision plat, which would be reviewed and finalized by this board at some point in the future if the rezoning is approved. Now, if the rezoning is not approved, they can still come back and with the AR zoning, provide, you know, a plat to you, for you to review, that would subdivide the property. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any commissioner comments or questions?
You have time to come up with any comments.
I don't look when, at this point. We have questions for the Serenity Lake group, then, you know, amongst us.
Okay.
And you suggest not closing the hearing, leaving it open. I think that's kind of the general idea, is let's leave this open, give us time to explore this PM zoning, and what type of restrictions we might want to apply, or if we want to apply any, or say yes or no. But I think we need some more time to explore this project.
I think we need to know more, in more detail.
Okay. Would we like to bring questions up tonight, too?
I think, in order to get the questions answered, we need to ask the questions tonight to the applicant, so he can bring more information forward. So...
We could have the representative of Serenity Lake back up.
Dan, do you want to answer the questions? Do you want to answer them, too?
Send the interview back up.
Can you step back up, please, sir? Officers. And again, state your name.
Dan Soddy. Anthony Slaughter.
And your position within the group? What are you representing within the group? Your owner?
No, I'm representing 10-acre.
Okay. All right.
I'm the civil engineer.
Okay. Just to run everybody again, okay? Who wants to start?
I've got a couple. How do you plan on serving the project with power? Overhead, underground? Have you talked to the EMC? What's your plan for that?
We're going to go underground with everything.
Underground? Data? Have you determined a service provider for internet and how that's going to work?
No.
Will that also be underground?
Yes. All utilities will be underground.
Have you explored the potential for county water? With small lot size, as everyone has spoke, there's a great deal of concern, what it does to the aquifer in the area, particularly to the farms. I just wondered if you guys have explored the possibility of extending county water to the project.
We were told initially that all the lots would be, would have wells, so that's the only thing we've explored. We don't know where the nearest, this is all concept stuff, so we're just in the concept phase. We haven't even started what I call hard design. We did our best to take all the amenities in the whole area and try to get this as a conservation subdivision, and try to hold and basically protect all the wetlands and vegetation and all that in this subdivision, and make it the way we want. If we leave it the way it is, we're going to go all two acres, and it's going to be a lot more lots. We're trying, the owners hired us specifically to maintain this subdivision, to maintain the basically area and aesthetics of the whole area in that location, so...
You do understand that this board cannot approve you to produce a subdivision on small lots with wells and septic? That is outside of our perpian.
Yeah. We have to follow all the Georgia Department of Health regulations. We do this on all, on ours.
Steve, can I make a comment on the wells?
Yes, sir, please.
We did reach out to a very reputable well company here locally, and we wanted to know that, too. And they said there was absolutely no problem with 124 wells. Would not infect the aquifer.
Let's keep it down. Let's keep it down. These are questions directed at the board, not to y'all. Thank you.
So, we did, we did reach out to them, because obviously, that was a concern of ours.
Well, I appreciate the comment, but if I was a well company, I'd sure like to...
Of course.
I mean, that's not up to them, either. So, it's mentioned that there's some possible commercial use of the property, restaurant-type, retail-type events? You mentioned events? Do we understand, we don't understand, what is the magnitude of that? We need to know more about those things.
Sure. Well, in terms of magnitude, I already stated this, that we'd like to be, the reason we wanted to add that to the PR was because we wanted to be able to have a deli for people to come and sit, have a cup of coffee. We're not interested in having a mini-mall. It's not, it doesn't fit into our design at all. It's actually just make it a little bit more self-contained, family-friendly, and so that's why we added that into it. In terms of the event, same thing, like, since we're going to have a clubhouse, and we're going to have a workout facility in that clubhouse for our subdivision, if they wanted to rent or use, you know, the main area for a get-together of some kind, we want to be able to do that. So, we want to be very transparent and say, "We'd like to have that option." In terms of the storage, the storage would be camouflaged significantly. We're not looking, again, with the high-end clients we have, we can't have what you would typically see as storage on the side of the highway. This is, this is going to have cupolas, it's going to have shedrooms, it's minimal, and we're not, you know, we have 124 homes, so we're going to be reasonable about how many we really want, and we wanted, the reason we wanted to do this is because we don't want their RVs parked in their driveways. We don't, we don't want that look. We're trying to control that, you know, through design. And so, you know, we've got, we proposed, you know, eight-foot fences on top of berms that are, you know, vegetated, so that you just don't see it. And it's a small portion of what we're talking about. We're talking about a couple acres.
So, if it's a small gated private community, how would you handle trash service? How would emergency services enter the property?
So, trash service is private, just like anybody else.
Private, as in you're going to have a community dumpster that you allow a truck to pick up?
No, 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 no. We would privatize it, and they'll bid on it, and they'll come and remove the trash, just like you have in the city.
So, the homeowners' association would privatize the trash for the residents?
Correct, sir.
And then, if it's a gated community, how would retail work? Would your coffee shop or whatever you refer to, that's exclusive only to the residents?
You know, the ownership group are pretty good people. I don't think they're going to kick somebody out if they come and have a cup of coffee, but it's primarily...
Well, they'd have to get through the gate first, right?
Well, I think the gates will probably be predominantly open.
Most subdivisions, the gates open at certain times, and at night, they close at a certain time. They're most of the time, they're open during the day.
You guys got more questions?
One of the questions I had was, if you're going to have a retail shop, it has to be open to the public, if we call it retail. So, you're saying that you have hours that, if I want to drive out to this Serenity Lake development and have a sandwich or a drink, even though I'm not a resident of that community, that would be unavailable to me as just a citizen here in Upson County, or anyone could come in out there? Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I think we're open to that.
Okay. And you're still set on a gated community, though? You're not, and the roads, you know, you've mentioned before, y'all were going to bring them up, that would be county-spec roads, curb gutters, slope gutters, is that still the intention?
Well...
I mean, because if you have a county-spec roads, why have a gated community? Because then you block yourself to a lot of the, you know, the fire, your ambulance service, things like that, your garbage pickup mail, every bit of that is kind of blocked to a gated community. And, you know, we'd like to know definitively whether you are going to have a gated community or not. And do you expect the county to adopt the roads, you know? Or, at one time, it was mentioned that HOA was going to handle the roads. You know, these are, a lot of these questions, we want definitive answers to.
Sure.
You know, we want you to spell out what you're expecting to do, so that we can, you know, say, "Hey, okay, yes, no."
Sure.
We like it, don't like it. And there was no mention of no multifamily?
There is no...
Okay, no multifamily, no multifamily at all.
In terms of the roads, I thought we did spell that out in the application, but they're probably...
You called out 24-foot back-to-back private gutter.
Yeah.
And on this, the storage lot, is it also fenced or protected?
Yes.
As far as postal service goes, have you talked to the post office? Because you're going to have to build a mail kiosk if you have a private development. Is that going to sit outside of the gate?
I think it would probably be inside the gate, in a kiosk. That's pretty common for subdivisions these days.
What about parcel delivery? You're going to have a parcel center, at the community center? I have a broken question.
Oh, well, do we want to continue to leave this open? Do you have to continue the hearing, give us time to study this, or do we want...
I think, I think we need to see more definitive proposals on paper for what we're talking about. What are you need?
Well, we'll have to compile a list and get it to you.
Yeah.
Or we'll be, you know, turn it in to Doug, and you receive it from Doug, answers that we, specific answers that we want. Is that agreeable?
I mean, as far as my stance on this tonight, I'm not in, I'm not in agreement or disagreement at this point in time to this project. I would like to see more, I mean, I think the, this owed to the public as to what style houses and stuff, I think it's in our packet, but I would like for the public to be able to see this, to give them time to see what y'all are proposing to build there, because right now, I think the only thing they've seen is the map that is shown in the 1-acre lots. That doesn't give a good interpretation of what's being built. I think I talked to the applicants and said, you know, "We would like to see, you know, bring in, so the public here, we can gain support from them or from us to see what style house," which I have it in my packet that was given.
There's boards outside.
Boards outside, I apologize, I didn't see that coming in.
Yes.
1-acre lot is small. To put a septic tank and a well on a 1-acre lot is very challenging. I know this because I live in the county. I live at 1156 Waymanville Road. Just here recently, some property adjacent to me, I bought in the county, as does everybody else, with the intent of having peace and serenity and not having neighbors. Unfortunately, the golf course sold, which we would never thought it would have sold, and then turned into a subdivision. Unfortunately, the back portion of that did. So, I will say, in order to protect my investment, I bought the lot directly adjacent to me, to protect me. So, development, whether we like it or not, that opportunity is going to continue to come here in Upson County. If we're discussing lot size, and I was not, I think we need to look into that more, because 1 acre is difficult. I've watched them build four houses so far on an acre lot. The minimum house size there is 2,100 square feet. To get a well in and a septic in, now I'm looking at my 1-acre lot that I bought, just as a buffer to take me, within eight feet of the property line, they drilled a well. So, within eight feet of my line, they drilled a well. So, what if I want to put a septic tank on my side? So, I think consideration of a minimum lot size larger than 1 acre should be considered. If you're looking for mine, but that's what I'm going to tell you, larger than the 1 acre. I would like to say that this opportunity, as Mr. Doug has said tonight, they can break these up into two acres and put two residences on two acres. You know, what this group has brought in is an opportunity for us, as a zoning board, to make recommendations to the commissioners. We can control this. I heard some comments saying that we don't, we won't be able to control it. Well, that's what this opportunity is for. That's what this rezoning application is for, to give us some controls. We can control how many houses are built there, how many plats we subdivide out. So, I think we all should collectively try to just look at it. And let's be real here, when we started out, I was born and raised here. In 1971, I was born in Upson County. I've raised. Some of you probably know me. I know that Tanya knows me very well, and I know Steve, and they all know me over here. I grew up on this very property that we're discussing tonight. Back in 197 something, in the early 80s, my dad leased this land that is now in discussion. We, I hunted there, I grew up as a little boy, my whole life grew up all of this. Some of you have homes there now that I used to hunt on your property, and it made me so mad that you built the house there. But it happened, and I'm not mad at you now. Just be considerate. Some of you grew up in what they call Sunnyside subdivision. How you think it got there? Some of you grew up, who knows, Gene Anthony and Gene Eggman, and that whole group that grew up in the subdivision just slightly west before you get where it's Thurston School Road and the highway. Look, I don't like it any more than y'all do, development. I'd like to be able to buy all the property in Thompson, just so we can keep it a green space. But it is what it is. And we have to be considerate that this is an opportunity to control something, not to just let them build two houses on 2-acre AR lots. Think about that, and let's, let's give this a fair chance to come out before us, to give us an opportunity. If this is going to happen, let's have some controls in it. Let's, let's see what we can do to make this be the best for the community. I don't, I don't want to see these people turn around now and just do as many 2-acre lots as they can and put a 1,008-square-foot house on them.
To give, to back up what you said, the owners came to us reasoning, because we've been doing this for years and years and years. We did not want to do the 2-acre stuff. They said, "Man, you're going to mess the whole community." They came to us specifically to make this a conservation subdivision, to make it match the area. And that's what we've tried our best to do on these maps, to concentrate on this and make it very friendly, walkable, and everything. So, that's what they've hired us to do, and not do just blanket subdivisions everywhere. This is a, to make it be something proud of, you'd be proud of in the community in several years once it's finished.
We're not allowed to.
I'm sorry.
I would like to say that on 1 acre for 2,500-square-foot house, with a well and septic tank, it's challenging, very, very challenging, on how that lays out. As a member of this board, I would like for you to go back and just look at that and take that in consideration in your final, in your modifying your design. The house designs, I've looked at them today, they're, they're nice homes. I'm to say they're nicer than what's being built next to me. I just encourage this community to think about this. You know, I want to protect y'all as much as possible, have the voice to send to the county commissioners to protect you as much as possible. This is a chance to do that. Just, that's what I have to say.
Mario, I would follow along with that, is this is the time to control it. Now, put restrictions on what we approve, and make sure that we're getting what we want as a community. This is the time to do it.
I think I'm definitely opening to the, to the PM zoning. I mean, it gives us, and I appreciate what y'all have approached, the way you've approached it. It shows that you really do want to keep the rural aspect of what we got. We know the growth is coming to Upson County, and, you know, there again, we want to direct it in the right way. You know, but there again, with this being one of the largest projects that come before us like this, we want to make sure we get it right the first time, where we do have the support of the community as we, of other projects come before us. So, like I said, we will work on a list of things that we definitely want answers to, and, you know, like I said, I think one of your biggest oppositions right now, the smaller lots, that people are mostly opposed to, and like you said, very few of them are smaller lots, but however, that's one of the, one of the biggest things that you're coming up with, and the county water needs to be explored. I think that's another definitive that you, you need to explore that. I know there's a little over a mile up the road, there is a 6-inch mine with the county there already.
So, this would relieve a lot of the concern about water.
Yes, it would relieve a lot of it.
If it was, if it was possible, if it worked.
Is the county willing to participate in any...
Well, that's, that's some of it. You know, we can't answer those questions, but, you know, that's something in theory that y'all would, would be y'all's job to check out. So, at this point, I think we're going to leave the hearing open and, and provide y'all with a list of things, you know, concerns of ours. And I'd all make a suggestion... And I, I'd always make a suggestion to y'all to have some type of community meeting with everybody that has concerns and let them voice them to y'all outside of this type of a setting. You know, you brought a nice display out there, you know, have a time and a place where y'all could set up with the community to show them, you know, what you're planning. Because I think there's still a lot, a lot of them don't know exactly what is... I've talked to a lot of people in there. What they're hearing and what, you know, with the breakfast club is majorly different than what y'all are presenting. I think you've got a great plan, and I'd love to see you present it to them and where we could get some more support from them also.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Hmm.
Formal motion to continue.
Do we need a, a motion to continue?
Oh, a motion.
In a second.
Uh, make a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Enamnisfaced.
Okay, uh, if, if anybody wants to stay is welcome, too. We have some other business we're gonna attend to. So, if you wanna leave, now would be the time you can leave. And we thank y'all for coming tonight. Uh, we can get y'all to please carry on your conversations outside so we can continue our meeting. Excuse me. Can y'all please carry your conversations on outside so we can continue our meeting? Or either stay in and it might just continue with you here? Thank you.
How are you?
Been great.
Haven't seen you in a month or so.
It has been a while, hasn't it? Yeah.
We used to live out on J. D.
Yeah, yeah, I know exactly where you were. Thank you.
I'll have to go. Good luck. I live in Tennessee, still have property on Kennesaw, but good luck.
Thank you.
Don't give up.
All right. All right, we're gonna continue on with any other business? Do we have any other business?
No, not from staff, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Now, where we had moved out on free old business to after other business, where, what do we... As far as the, the continued hearing on the zoning ordinance amendments?
Public hearing.
Yep. Do we have comments of what, do we want to continue?
I think it's to be pushed, whatever the mechanism is, pushing it until the commissioners are ready to have that conversation.
So, how do we approach that, when we're gonna...
Table.
To just continue the table, the, okay.
Well, maybe not a month if you wanna save it for...
Try it.
Continue it for two months to three months, because I know we've had discussion about trying to get together with the board of commissioners, and I've heard comments from the other side that I think they're open for that. I guess the matter of, like, you're busy, they're busy.
Yeah.
They're trying to get themselves in one place first.
Well, if we give it a three-month term, at least it keeps it off of our agenda for, for three months. And I thought, you know, can we get a motion to, to continue it for three months?
I'll make a motion to continue it for three months.
Okay. Now, a second? Second, okay. All in favor?
Not later, but maybe.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Enamnisfaced.
Okay. Uh, planning commission doesn't have any issues or announcements, Thomas, in it this time?
I don't.
Okay.
None from staff, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion. Close the meeting.
Second.
Uh, before closing, I just wanna say that, um, I, I would like to make some opportunity at this time to make some changes to our process of our meeting. Uh, I would like to start the meeting out with a moment of silence, um, and then a pledge of allegiance. We got the flags here. I'd like to have a pledge of allegiance and bring this meeting to an official opening. Um, I think we owe it to God and our country to recognize those two things when we start our meeting every time. Um, and then, the processes, I, I would like to see that when people, as people are coming in, we notify them as they're coming in, "You have an opportunity now to sign up for public comments." And whether you're for or against, it should be an opposition or for, two separate signup sheets. They sign up prior to this meeting. Once we get that sheet and this meeting starts, that's it.
That's normal ways to conduct.
That's, that's it. We're gonna do it that way. And the applicant will have five minutes. I think those in opposition, when we have, you know, whether we wanna do five minutes or three minutes, typically, when I have done this throughout the United States with my position, the company I work for, opposition typically gets three minutes to speak their opposition. Um, because here's what I have experienced in my time doing this at my employment. Usually, the applicant has to provide his information, his or her information for this. You're not gonna hear from people if they're neutral or for it. You're only gonna hear from those that are against it. And usually, when they come in in larger crowds, they say the same thing over and over.
Very repetitive.
I think three minutes is appropriate for the opposition to have to speak. I will say, though, if one chooses to speak for a minute and give their final two minutes to someone else, say, a Mr. Sam Baby, I think, I think they can transfer their time to someone. These are just things that I am presenting to this board and to Mr. Doug to make changes to, to... First of all, to make it better as, as we're representing Upson County, and, um, and then make this process go a little smoother in the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doug, I would like to say, as far as you and your staff, the information you have provided has, was excellent. Thank you for your information, your time and your input. I, I sat here and I read it over the weekend, I read it again today before I came. I appreciate, because you give us exactly what the ordinance says, and you go through and you explain, and you're very clear and concise on what they, the applicants have the rights to do at this time with their current zonings. And then, you try to explain what the proposed zonings, or if we wanna cause special exceptions, what those opportunities are, and you've always done a good job. So, Mr. Doug, I would like to say thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I apologize for the lateness, but we're trying to hire me help. We're not having a lot of success right now, but we're trying, and hopefully, the timeliness of what you get will be, like I said, I, I'm appalled that you get it as late as you do, but I really can't do much more. It just is what it is. We're trying to hire help. Thank you to the board of commissioners for authorizing that position, but it's difficult recruiting somebody. But thank you very much for your kind words. In terms of these changes, what I'll do is the best I can to draft them up. Um, you may be familiar with the fact we do have bylaws, uh, rules of procedure, and this would be an amendment. Now, the way it works is, basically, you introduce it at one meeting and then you adopt it at the next one as amendments to your rules of procedure. If we ever get to the point where I can give you your orientations, one of the things we do go over is the rules of procedure, and I can certainly email you copies. I'll make a note right now to email you copies of the rules of procedure, uh, so that you know what is current. Normally, we actually have a procedure for amending them every even year so that they don't get stale. We actually put it on the agenda every even year that you'll review it. So, you know, this is an odd year, but we, that's no problem. So, I'll draft them up. If you don't like the language, where we put et cetera, and then you can adopt it at your next meeting per procedure if you wanna include those, and hopefully, my language reflects what you wanna do. And then, the majority board can agree or disagree with amending the rules of procedure.
Okay. I'd like to add one thing. First off, I appreciate the suggestions, I think. There's meat on the bone there for us to look at. The only thing I would say is, I don't know if we have a disparaging difference in time for or against. Someone might decide that that's not equitable.
Yeah.
So, I would consider the equal amount of time whether for or against. If it's three minutes, I'm not opposed to that, but just a consideration we need to make.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at speed of the process, because you...
What you're, what you said is absolutely correct. There's gonna be a lot of redundancy in the combination.
Alan, Mr. Chairman, and this is, as I handed you earlier, the rules of procedure, and this isn't just... This is for all public hearings in Upson County, and to the issue that we're talking about, um, the length of time for each oral presentation will be governed by the planning commission, depending upon the number of persons present and designed to speak. Each person other than the applicant will be allotted the same amount of time to speak. And, and again, we want to copy this, too. We can, I can distribute this right now. We're actually required to have this in the meeting at all times if somebody wants a copy of this, so... We do sort of have some procedures and rules of procedure, some of the ordinance, some of it are yours. Um, and we can make you more familiar with that, that's not a problem.
Okay, uh, I think that's everything we've got. Uh, we got a motion to close the meeting?
We had a motion, and we had a second.
We've already been on closing the meeting, okay?
Got a motion, 711.
Hmm. All right, thank y'all for your support tonight. Let's kill the camera, Doug.
Yes, sir.
Listen.
Thank you for reminding me, Phil.
Do you have one?
Yes, yes.